Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 27, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast later on. Due to the elections, we can't be in the Town Hall boardroom because all the equipment is there. I just want to introduce Bob Phelan, a returning but new member to our Planning Board. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. I'd like to now just turn to the correspondence. One of the important items is a, for people to take note of, is the fact that we're changing our schedule in July. We're having two meetings in July instead of the one, and that is primarily to accommodate a in-depth discussion of the commentary we heard last time at the Public Informational Hearing on the Underhill Farms project. And that will be taking place on July 11, 2022. And instead of the following week, we'll be meeting again for a more regular agenda on July 25, 2022. So we have those date changes for the month of July. The only other comments that came in on the correspondence were a number of memos from Abaca on various projects that we've been considering, and we will certainly take note of those as those projects come before us. I'd like to turn our attention now to the meeting minutes of our last meeting, June 13.
We didn't do the pledge.
What?
We didn't do the pledge.
Oh, we gotta do the Pledge of Allegiance. That's right. Let's do it. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
Anyway, going into the meeting minutes, have you had a chance to review them? They were fairly lengthy.
I didn't. I reviewed.
Any corrections or changes?
Not that I could see.
Motion to accept.
Motion.
I had one, there was one typo I saw on, and I meant to email it to Nancy, but I didn't. There's no internet here. I'll email it tomorrow. It was during one of the comments, the word "your" was supposed to be something else. I forget which one. But it was one of the speakers of the public hearing. So I would just say, let the minutes be approved, and Nancy can correct that. I'll email it tomorrow where it is.
Okay.
Okay. Good.
There is a motion. Is there a second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. May I have a motion to open our regular session?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you. First item on our agenda, and the next couple of ones are basically time extensions. First request for a one-year time extension on behalf of McDonald's Restaurant. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Any reason why we should not proceed with this request?
Not from our perspective.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve a one-year time extension for McDonald's?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, number four, is a one-year time extension request for Nantucket Sound Site Design Consultants. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Joseph Rine, the Principal of Site Design Consultants. We're requesting a time extension. The project is ready to go. Everything is all set pending setting the bond and fee amounts, and otherwise, we have all approvals in line.
Okay. Any reason why this can't proceed?
Not from planning's perspective, no.
Nothing for me.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the extension request?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. You got it? Thank you. Number five. This is a second one-year time extension request for Atlantic Appliance.
Good evening, Joseph Rine, the Principal of Site Design Consultants. Everything is all set on that project. We're just working out the conservation easement. It's been put together, and it's waiting for review and approval, and then it can be signed and filed, and everything else would be all ready to go.
Okay. John, any comments?
None at this time.
Jim?
Nothing for me.
Motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
That was a short evening for you.
You got even early today.
Quick evening.
You were all early today.
Number six on the agenda is the Bellamy Subdivision, which we've been working on, and we have a proposed decision statement for that project located at 379 Alex Mill Road. It's a two-lot subdivision application. Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody doing this evening?
Very well.
I'm here representing the Alex Mill Subdivision from Bellamy. You know, I've received the draft resolution. I think that it's pretty cut and dry. You know, we actually have the plat prepared, and I just got the actual descriptions in today for the road parcels, the deed to the town. So we're moving forward with what we have, and I'd like to see if we can get this thing approved.
Ready to proceed. Any comments or questions from the board on this? John, any comments?
No, we think it's ready for approval.
Jim?
No, I have no objection.
Okay. I'm not hearing any objections, so we'll proceed. I guess we, have we done lead agency on this yet?
You'll do it with the resolution.
Doing this, is it in the resolution here?
Yes.
And we have a negative declaration. Is there a motion to adopt a negative declaration on this project?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? And the approving resolution containing the declaration of lead agency, is there a motion to adopt the approving resolution?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Very good. Okay. I think you've got it.
You got it.
We're all set.
Well done.
When do you expect work to start?
As soon as we get the plat signed, I mean, I'll be, Joe is chomping at the bit to get going in there, and I was thinking about it today, the sooner the better, because school's not in session right now, so.
Good. Great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. I have no further business on our regular agenda, so I'd like the motion to close the regular session.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. We're now going to proceed into our work session agenda. The first item is the application for site plan approval for Lakeview Estates Lot Number Six located at 1102 Gambelli Drive. Is the applicant present? Gambelli, Lakeview?
Not here. He is supposed to come, so maybe you want to skip it.
I can hold off. If they come in a little later, we'll pick it up again.
Work on it later.
Number eight, Volta Charging Stations Application at Staples Plaza, Site Plan Application, 3333 Crumpon Road. Cardian Fader? You gonna get out of here early tonight?
Well, I see the guy coming in from Lakeview Estates.
Okay.
So you can do that one at least.
Might as well. Bob can speak firsthand on history of this.
Yeah, I was just saying, I was here when that.
I saw your name there. Maybe you can, do you remember this?
I do, yes. A lot of wetlands.
That is true.
Yes.
Hi, we just called your matter, so why don't you step forward?
Good evening. Sorry for delay. Missed the change in menu. Greg Chappell, I'm the property owner for Lot Six of the Lakeview Estates.
So the last time we were here, if I recall correctly, we expressed concerns about the changing of the conservation easement line to allow this proposed project, you know, to go forward. And one of the things we were hoping to get information on is things that happened elsewhere in the subdivision, which might show that the conservation restrictions have been departed from. Do you have any information or anything else you wish to add in support of your application tonight?
There was a good package here put together, basically of the minutes, I believe, of the planning and maybe the Town Board that have spoken about this property from, really from its inception. This really goes back and shows that the way that it's recorded in the deed, which is the first version, the deed's the best portion wording of it, but it's been referred to in the next two deeds, mine being a third of those three, is that, you know, it goes back to being managed as if it was a wetlands buffer, in which case need to appear and get town approval to be able to encroach within that buffer, and that's what's happened. And there's been mitigations as if it were a wetlands buffer and not a conservation line. There's one property, Grotto, which went forward and reset a conservation border along what became famously elevation 466, including putting two concrete monuments there so it could be, I assume, witnessed and memorialized for the town and everybody looking at it. I don't know where they got the 466, and I don't know why they didn't use the conservation line here, but I think that was actually recorded on their deed as an easement. One of the things, my deed doesn't call this an easement, it just calls it a wetlands area demarked by that, that meets and bounds. So I've been referring to it as a boundary, but I think it's vague at this point, and certainly worthy of why we're discussing it at this point.
So your position basically is, if I understand it correctly, that your property's restrictions are wetland-related and not conservation easement-related? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that the research has been that that's how it's, that conservation boundary's been administered since the subdivision was created, was people have gone back and looked at it as a hundred-foot buffer. Certainly, there's plans that I have, small segment, because my property hasn't developed, and I haven't done this research. The one thing we did separate from, I think, anybody else at this point, was we went out and did a wetland survey and found there is a deviation between the conservation boundary and the current hundred-foot buffer, as set by an independent environmental engineer. And that's actually the difference that we're talking about. The house, we were able to position the house and reconfigure it to be outside of the true 100-foot buffer, but it is about, I don't know, 12 or 15 feet over the conservation boundary.
Any questions from the board? John?
Obviously, if the rest of the.
Well, I'll give them the opportunity, and then, of course, you can jump in. Go ahead.
Well, I think if the rest of the project is, you know, exceeds what he's saying, then why can't we apply that to his property? If everybody else did it, why can't we let him do it? I mean, I don't think we should restrict him when everybody else had their way. Just my thought.
How many houses actually took the deferral on the conservation line?
So none of them actually have the primary structure over the line that was always held up to the line. Two of them have the majority, if not the entire, underground swimming pool, and what's either a shed or a cabana, poolhouse attached to it. And then there's a fountain and some driveway improvements that have certainly, I think, exceeded what the original intent was. I still think when you drive through the neighborhood that it's really been maintained well, and I think what people worried about, I think, really has, hasn't come around, and the density of improvements back there is really light.
If I remember correctly, the majority of the footing for the house is going to be on a rock, cropping?
100%. All the disturbance that I'm doing over the conservation boundary is just on that rock. And the whole purpose is the majority of that property rolls down into this conservation area. We would like to enjoy that if we're going to live there. And rather than disturb the rock, we're going to put one of our primary living spots up on top of it.
Facing the wetlands.
Facing the wetlands. I'll have a living room and a kitchen and a rooftop patio.
I know, Bob, you were.
I'm struggling to remember.
On the board, and I wouldn't expect you to remember something that happened 30 years ago, but.
So one of the things we've done, that's some of the other concerns, so they were concerned about digging of the pools and the disturbance of the soils and the conservation, which we're not doing. They were concerned about the long-term infiltration of both chlorine and the salts. I didn't know there were salts as part of the chlorine treatment, but there are. And we're actually a flat roof structure pulling all of our rainwater back, dry wells or rain garden and/or rain garden on the property. So we're actually maintaining, pulling all of the stormwater, sanitary, septic system, and, well, all within, outside of the conservation. All we're asking for is to put, we are putting a house there. I mean, it is a fairly significant request.
If this was purely an issue of building in a wetland-controlled buffer, I would view it differently than I view it in terms of having a conservation easement on top of that wetlands buffer. And I question why the board felt the need to have the double level of protection in this case unless there was something very important to them when they put that together? Because the wetlands law, which was, by then, when it was originally set up in this subdivision, the wetlands law was just a couple of years old, so it was brand-new, and maybe that's a reason. But I'd be interested to hear what John and maybe Jim have to shed, you know, say on this to shed some light on these questions. Go ahead.
So in terms of the administration of conservation easements, it has been, even previously to this subdivision and what he references as Grotto, been with this board. So if there was a conservation easement that had been implemented during a subdivision or a site plan, when there was a request to go into that or modify it, it came back to this board. When we spoke at the last meeting and you asked for some research be done on how the instances in this subdivision that Mr. Chappell found came about, I expected that if we found anything, it would be a planning board matter. It was not. And if you read through the documentation for Grotto in particular and the resolution, the language in there isn't resetting the conservation line or modifying it. There is no mention of that. There is a mention of looking at the environmental values in terms of a wetland permit application process and then establishing a conservation easement at a long elevation line 466. So I think that that was an error, that it was in front of the Town Board at that time, and that they looked at a wetland permit application, set a new conservation easement without ever having the benefit of going into the record to look at the plat that was produced by the planning board for that subdivision, because there's no mention of it. And that may have happened also with the earlier, I think there's one other wetland permit in there that was done by the Town Board. Now, it would make sense that they do a wetland permit after the fact, after the lot is developed according to the improvement plan, but not so with the conservation easement. This board has always re-looked at conservation easements that they've set to allow or disallow any encroachment or modification there, too. Now, that's just about the process. So when you see Grotto, I think it's a mix-up in that there was not proper research done to bring forth all of the information pursuant to that particular lot. That being said, it still is in front of this board whether to consider the encroachment based on whatever values that you're considering and what the encroachment actually does pursuant to what the conservation easement was intended to do. But I think in terms of what has happened to the two lots that have a record was from the Town Board, which I think was in error in terms of encroachment into the conservation easement. And then there was one or two that had some encroachment that have no record of any action.
Okay. Jim, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah. I saw what the staff had put together in this subdivision, and what struck me is, well, I did see a little procedural chaos, which John just pointed to, but I also saw that the planning board showed flexibility in terms of letting people develop the individual lots based upon particular hardships. And I think that's what you have here. You have a hardship that is really not anybody's fault, and this applicant seems to have gone out of their way to try to make something work while keeping in mind the whole purposes of the conservation easement. So that's my thought, that I think the planning board has the right to grant changes to the map, so to speak, by allowing deviations where this is a good showing of need.
Yeah.
And I think this applicant has made a good showing.
Thanks, Sean. Hey, thanks for the direction.
Are there any other comments from the board? So do you want to proceed in that direction and have a resolution going on?
I think we should proceed.
Proving it based upon the discussion we had?
Yeah.
And a finding of hardship should be in there then, but yeah.
The applicant has done his due diligence. I mean, he's really researched. Thanks.
I think the one other comment I would make is, you haven't really claimed hardship, but what you've shown, in my mind, is respect to the environment and everything that's there, and have approached it in a really prudent manner. So based upon what I've seen.
Agreed. Agreed.
And we really, we really do love the piece of property that matters, and we've tried to respect it in a way that allows us both to interact with it with the daily lives and yet still respect what the board's done, really, through the history. And if you read this, it was quite a battle to get that subdivision, that bridge built, and so.
Is there enough in the record now to proceed to a decision on this next time?
Yes.
In terms of what, you know, minimizing the impact on the land that was in the easement to make sure that all of those things are addressed as conditions?
If Mr. Chappell could reinforce the hardship with a written narrative, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. Anything I need?
Okay. Anything else? That's it? All right, so that's how we'll proceed?
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, Volta Charging Station, recall that? Crumpon Road.
Which is the Jefferson Mall Mall, right?
Is that?
The mall.
Yeah. Right.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Okay.
My partner from Volta, Sam Lee, is supposed to be joining us. He may walk in in a moment. But for the record, my name is Dean Apostolaris. I represent the engineering firm, Kimley Horn and Associates, who prepare the design plans that we have before you this evening. So I'm here to discuss two EV charging stations at the Staples Plaza. These are Volta charging stations. Volta has been before the Town Board to get an approved zoning amendment to incorporate the media aspect of the screens, as well as the size, and defining the EV charging stations a little bit further in terms of code provisions and what can and cannot be done on commercial sites such as this. So with respect to that, we, like I said, we have gone through with the Town Board and gotten those zoning amendments approved. I do also have record here from the planning board that you guys had been pleased that the legislation was proposed. There was one small exception, but under that single exception, you guys had no objections to that. So with respect to the site plan, let me just go to our. So we are proposing two electric EV charging stations in the front drive aisle of the existing detail space here. These charging stations installed in existing landscape islands on foundations that are about four feet by four feet, and we are tying into utility power, not house-building power. And these charging stations will serve existing parking spaces adjacent to those landscape islands. There will be no net reduction in parking. All the parking is staying the same, with the exception of striping and signage that will allow users to identify the charging station being there and the placement of it, as well as the striping and what it's meant for. So that's generally all I have to say. Sam, I don't know if you'd like to say anything?
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the late entrance, but I'm the EPM with Volta. I think we've met before once. Dean was, you know, giving a good presentation, so I'll let him get back to it. But if you guys have any questions specific to Volta or business model, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thanks. Any comments or questions from the board? Looks pretty straightforward to me.
Locations in existing islands, or are they going to create new?
They're located in existing landscape islands. So if you're willing to turn this a little bit, that might be easier for both to see. Yep. So these are existing landscape islands. We bring the conduit right to the landscape island, and we install the charging station there, which services the adjacent parking stall. So very minimal construction. How we do the conduit runs here is with underground boring, so there's no tearing up of the existing asphalt or overlaying any pavement. Very minimal construction, no real disturbance to the space there for customers.
Are you guys, you're proposing a project at the mall as well?
That's correct.
So are these the same charging stations with the video advertising or whatever it is that you might?
We do advertise, but they're all static images. There's no video or audio from our stations.
But it's an image that changes, right?
Correct, yeah. Those are flipped.
Similar, so all the same approaches to the content of those ads and everything else would apply to what we discussed about the mall?
Correct.
Okay. So we can go forward with this one, then? Any issues from staff?
Can you describe the signpost bollard? Or do you have a picture of it, what it looks like, and what its purpose is?
So I don't have the detail here. If you want to scroll towards, there should be some detail sheets there if you want. There it is. So you have the detail, I believe that's number nine there. So that shows the signpost. It's just their standard, I believe, 36-inch bollard with, you know, a sign and EV signage there. That's right.
Is that underground? What does that look like?
So, yeah, if you wouldn't mind just scrolling up one page. Yeah, so to the west there, that's where we had planned to tie into existing utility service. And so what we're calling the power control system is essentially an electrical cabinet that allows us to power these two stations. These are what's known as DC fast charging stations. So these charge your car with a little bit more power. They charge your car a little bit quicker, typically within 30 minutes. So in order to get that extra power oomph, so to speak, we have a power control system there to get us the additional power that's needed for those stations.
Okay, and how large is that?
So that's approximately a seven-foot-tall electrical cabinet. That is, I believe, 36 by 24 on the base and about approximately 70 inches.
So that is in the island, the westernmost island and bordering that drive aisle?
That is correct, yes. Okay.
Anything else? Jim, you have anything on this?
Yeah.
Okay. So this can proceed, resume?
Proceed.
Well, with this, we'll take it to the next step?
Great.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we'll send a memo to them and keep it moving.
So, yeah, we request for a public hearing to happen. Is that the next step here?
A public informational, actually.
Yeah.
Do we need all that, or is this the same issue we've been working into?
We need all that.
Okay.
I was thinking maybe we need it.
So you work with us to set it up?
To set it up.
It'll be in July.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is number nine, the Shrub Oak International School. This is a discussion of an amended site plan on property located at 3151 Stony Street. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for seeing us this evening. I know we sent a letter in late last week asking if we could have a discussion about beginning some construction on the site for the Phase Two parking. If you recall, we had the Phase Two parking, and I think we sent a diagram in with that letter that we sent to you. We sort of bubbled out the area where the Phase Two was. That was part of the master plan originally. It's nothing that's really new for the board. I know there's discussion going on with respect to secondary access on the south of the property that maybe we can talk tonight about. If not, we can schedule another meeting. But certainly, the school is getting ready for the fall. I know it's still June, but they want to make sure they have some parking in place as enrollment, as we outlined before. Enrollment's increasing, and hopefully they're pushing hard for the fall, and they'll need more parking for teachers. So we really want to get this going in time so that they can have some of that parking available for them. I spoke to John Tediger about it, and he said to send the letter in requesting if we could get permission to start that construction now, obviously going through a building permit process. And prior to that letter, we had sent in the storm warning management analysis that we had for the new parking lot, which actually was for Phase Two. That was submitted to Dan CRC's office last month. Not sure if there was any comments yet from him, but we'll follow up with him, you know, as we need to, to get the project permitted, so to speak, as required. So if we could have permission to do that, that would be appreciative, so they could get going on getting ready for the fall.
So what you're asking for has already been approved on the plans, except you want to change the timing or the phasing of implementing that part. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. We had originally, if you remember, Phase One was approved, and we actually came before the board just to sort of segment some of that work.
Yes.
I don't remember that, so they could close out Phase One. Now we're here at the doorsteps of Phase Two, and they want to get it going, and that's what they're trying to do. So I know you need a little bit more time perhaps to get, you know, review additional information on the project for secondary access, I understand. But if everything's okay with the Phase Two parking, we'd like to get that at least started, if possible.
What do you think, John?
Well, just a couple of questions. Jerry first.
Yep.
So you're talking about the two bays of parking, right?
Yeah.
That are in the light yellow?
Right. So if you think about, the first bay is almost...
Not the gray.
It's there already in a way, right? They're parked there now. Correct. So we're trying to move that one more bay over to get additional parking provided for them.
Okay.
And then also, we had that, I don't know if you can see it, that entrance road that...
Right.
Yeah, right up there. It goes up in that way. So that will allow them to come through there. I mean, it's not totally necessary to have that, but if we're going to do this work, we might as well include that all now. And ultimately, when this is all approved for the different phases of the project, which have up to Phase Five, this being Phase Two that we're working on, will allow them to get this thing moving for the fall.
Okay. And the island that separates the two bays, at one point, it expands out to a wide area. What is exactly happening there?
Between the first two bays, you mean?
Yeah.
Eventually, that'll be a landscaped island, you know, in between there.
Right, there's a landscaped island between, but there's that section that has a wide rectangle. He knows.
Oh, that's actually where the generator and the electrical equipment is there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's basically it.
Perfect, okay. Just a quick question on that. So all of this is really under an existing approval? And if you recall, we're moving around some of the phasing, and then there are some amendments that really don't affect the parking. So that's why we thought, advised Jerry to write a letter, because, you know, it's really an approved plan. So from the planning department's perspective, we have no objection to getting started, provided that the approval continues in its review.
I don't have any objection either. Do you have any objection?
Why not?
The only thing I would add into this is that if you, as we go through, maybe we need to look at what the population is, because maybe things are changing a little bit. I know you're ramping up and so forth, and you've probably learned a little bit more about how things will work. So if we could just revisit the population between students and teachers, what those ratios are, and what you expect to be coming to the site on a daily basis. If it's the same, then we can just indicate that. Otherwise, if you could modify that.
All right.
Other than that, we have no objections to it.
What's the next step?
We can write a memo advising the building department and the town engineering department that you are in favor of it, and they'll oversee it.
Do you need a resolution on this?
Just a motion.
Motion?
Yeah.
All right. Do we have to open a special session? I don't personally think so, but...
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the rearranging of the phasing to allow the Phase Two parking as requested tonight?
Motion.
There's a second.
So what we're recommending is memo be written?
Yeah. But we, you know, we have to... I'd like us to have something in our record that says we formally approved this request and, you know, whatever the next steps are.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you. Our record's complete, then you can go forward. Then we'll get whatever appropriate memos need to be done will be followed.
Yeah, we'll coordinate with the building department and Dan's office as well, yeah.
Okay.
Is there any discussion that wants to occur tonight on the secondary access driveway while we're here, or that's...
Are you bringing it up?
I am.
You sure you don't want to do that?
Well, we can't move forward without it.
You know, I'll just add in that, you know, my view has not really changed that much. You have a driveway there or a road, whatever you want to call it, that will remain in existence that is woefully inadequate according to the code required grading. And I think everyone that has been involved in the discussion has acknowledged that the road will be used when it is needed to be used. So my recommendation is that in order to be as, you know, to be as compliant to the code as possible and to keep in mind the safety factor in using that road, that it be upgraded to lessen the grade as much as possible and to smooth out the connection to Stony Street and to widen it a little bit so it functions in a more safe way.
Right.
And that's been what my sense has been, and it really hasn't changed that much.
Any comments from the board? Is there a road profile that exists on that? What's this one?
I don't know if the board recalls that the original plan had a much more robust, if you want to call it, secondary access that came off Stony Street, and it curved back in, around the cemetery, back into the park area driveway there. But the cuts and the excavation was tremendous. We had 30-foot cuts to 22-foot cuts in areas, and it was just, it was a lot of disturbance, a lot of excavation and cost, obviously. Then we did present an alternative that would take the existing driveway on the south side and modify the profile by cutting it down in some areas, so that the maximum slope would have been no more than 14%, which, you know, is very doable. And it's a straight line. It's not a curve roadway.
That seems to me a reasonable compromise.
Yeah. And, you know, if need be, we could propose that as, not for Phase Two or Three, but in, you know, subsequent phase of the project and agree to do that at that time, so as to, you know, plan with the current growth of the project. So if that's something we could look at.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, I think he's right, right there. I mean, he did his work, and what he wants to do is accomplish what we want. I can't see no reason to be object.
More of this type of recommendation.
This one, yeah.
What do you think? Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's a, I think John's thought is probably the most prudent, but it may not be the most practical. And so in this case, I think this serves kind of everybody's needs.
Yeah, absolutely.
And is a workable solution.
Is that the profile you're looking at?
The profile, yes. Proposing 14%?
Yes. There's a section of it.
We've got sections of roads that are 14% and down easily, so... Is the condition of the road a big issue as well?
The condition is not the best. It's fairly old. It's been there since the 50s, and it's not that wide. So this proposal is to widen it.
And change the grade.
And to lessen the grade, so it's more uniform. You eliminate the 20% grade that you have down towards the connection to Stony Street, which is the worst place to have it.
Right.
And so I think it makes it significantly safer to use. And, you know, we haven't even spoken about, you know, how it will function, but I think it would be up to them how it's used. They could keep a chain across it, but I think that you guys acknowledge it would be used in some fashion, in some manner, at some time. So, you know, in view of just prudent site planning, now that we're here with a major project to the site, I think it has some value to do it.
Let's clarify, ask the question.
So John, what I'm trying to understand is this... Rob, if you go up a little? Or the other way, down. So the green area right on the bottom there, what I'm seeing there is a proposal to connect the town park to that road, to the parking lot, as the solution. I think what you're talking about is that road that's not colored, right there.
Yes. From somewhere in the blue down to Stony Street is what this profile is talking about.
Right, mostly from here down.
Yeah. So that green connection is actually there. It may be improved by the town. And then the Shrub Oak International School will determine whether they can build that parking lot for use of the park. I think that they have indicated that they will, but what we're talking about here is the use of the road and its condition and configuration, which goes from Stony Street to the top of the hill.
So the road that currently would be not, recommendation here on this screen would not be used, because there's a gate right there that would essentially make that impassable. You wouldn't be able to down it.
The gate down at the bottom by Stony Street?
No, no, up top. There's one just right...
There's an existing gate here.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, on the other, to the other side. There, yep. So there's a proposed gate there to block vehicles from going down to Stony Street.
Well, that's yet to be, that remains to be seen, whether or not that will remain in your phasing plan as you approve it. But certainly, just the condition of the road, that whether there's gate open or not, at some point, those gates will be open for the road to be utilized. It should be, you know, reconstructed to, in the most safe configuration that we can get it to. That's my point. So, yeah, I think that once it is improved, that it will have, it will present more utility than it does in its present condition.
Yeah.
Not only to the Shrub Oak International School, but to people that may use that parking over there. And again, the Shrub Oak International School may say, when there's park people over there, we're going to keep that gate closed because we don't want them... You know, I don't know exactly how that will happen yet. So it's really limited to the discussion of improving the road, so it's as close to code compliant as we can get it. So when it is used by whomever, that it's safe.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, my apologies that you guys are obviously flying through the agenda, or my clock is off. David Steinmetz from the law firm Zerran and Steinmetz here this evening representing the school, and just literally feel like I walked in at a point of potential disconnect, and my client does not want there to be any disconnect. And kind of riffing off of Rob's question, and I feel like we've done this four times, so let's do it five. My client is 100% prepared to cooperate with the town and facilitate parking for the town's park and the recreation department, as has been discussed. However, that was offered at a point in time where there was not an understanding that the town would be asking for a substantial upgrade of the road configuration, given the fact that we believe meaningful access can be obtained from the site. If the town feels otherwise, and John and I have had this conversation, we understand that, and we're here again to cooperate for safety and access. However, the construction of the parking lot, which is what I thought I might have heard Rob say in his question, is predicated upon our not, my client not having to do the balance of the road configuration. So it's, I hate to be anything other than honest and blunt, it's kind of an either-or. The land area is there, and if the town wants to allocate funds to build parking for its park, to facilitate its park, Brian and the Coflers and the school are prepared to do so. They were going to build it if they didn't have to spend tens of thousands of dollars to do this other roadway that they don't feel they need to. I thought I've made that clear a couple of times. Brian feels we've made it clear, but as I walk in, it feels like that may not be clear. So again, as I'm sure Jerry said before I walked in, we really want to get our parking lot underway, our parking lot. School's doing great. The absorption's doing well. The students are...
That you got?
Good.
We did that, and then the question, and at that point, I thought we were going to be done with this application.
We would like to be done.
But then the other question came back to us, so that launched that discussion that you came in on.
Got it. Glad I got it.
So this is not a new roadway. Let's be clear of that.
Agreed. An upgraded of existing.
Not a disney roadway. Well, Dave just said it was, you know, redoing, making a new road.
Is it a road or is it a driveway?
It's a, you can call it either way, but it's a driveway. It accesses a site, yes.
We would like to be done.
But then, then the other question came back to us, so that launched that discussion that you came in on.
Right, so, and this is not a new roadway, let's be, let's be clear.
Agree. An upgraded of existing.
Not a new roadway, well, Dave just said it was, you know, redoing, making a new road.
Is it a road, or is it a driveway?
It's a, you can call it either way, but it's a driveway. It accesses, it accesses a site, yes. Which has code requirements as well. Now, let's keep in mind that the beginning point is that the current approval on the books right now has a two-sectioned new roadway that moves north and south, it's probably 24 feet wide, and is the one that Jerry referred to that has a significant 30-foot cut. So that is a significant construction, significant expense, and it was approved by your board with a view to provide adequate access and flexibility for the users of the site, and for emergency access. And the one leg, I would say, was also to have some utility for the park as well, which has only the one access in. Now we're talking about that the trade-off, to eliminate that from the standing approval, is to build either a parking lot, or to do, in an either-or situation, either the parking lot, or to cut down about five feet of the roadway and widen an existing roadway to bring it into a more safe configuration. So if that's what the discussion is, then maybe to help you along, maybe there's some cost estimating that can be submitted, so that we understand what the implications of the applicant are. But I don't think it removes the safety consideration of that existing roadway. I don't know that there can be really a trade-off between, you know, building the park, you know, in either or. I mean, I think it needs to, something needs to happen to that roadway. It was solved in the first approval with the new road, which was going to provide access to, you know, from two points for the 300 teachers that will be coming to the site, or whatever those numbers are, which I think we'll hear about again. Now that is eliminated, and you only have the main entrance, and if you do not have this, the only other entrance would be secondarily through the park. And the planning department does not feel that that's adequate.
Okay.
Aaron, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Since I'm the new kid here, there is reference to gates, and who has the control over the use of those gates, and determines when are they open and when are they closed?
So we had spoken previously, Mr. Phelan, that if, in fact, there were gates that were impeding town access to our client's property and vice versa, certainly all town first responders would have, would have access to that. So the gates are for safety and security at the school, and we trust the town with that key.
No, my question really comes, if the new parking area is built, which is basically for town use.
Correct.
There are gates that would control your ability to exit onto Stony Street. Who makes that decision whether those gates are open or closed for the public use of parking at that point?
So our gates, if you look at the plan there where the blue line comes down, right, that's where our gate is, you see the little, yeah, right there.
Right, exactly.
So we, that's the end of our gate, right there.
Okay.
So at the bottom of the street, there's a, you know, like a yellow plastic chain that's up, which if we do this whole road, we'd change that around. So you can't really access our property from that driveway currently, because we're gated off after that. So if we had the park operating, and we had the road done with the new grading, there wouldn't be a gate probably bottom of that road.
All right. My concern is, let's say that parking area is built, and the town is utilizing it for some purpose, and people are looking to exit that parking lot, they're going to want to go out onto Stony Street, are we inviting them down a road that is currently substandard to an intersection at Stony Street that is substandard? I don't think that's a good plan to pursue.
Couldn't we route them back onto the town property?
Well, I was going to say that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, either you go back on town property, because I wouldn't want them going down.
We agree with that. No, no, so initially, whatever is decided on out of the road would be decided, but the connection between the park and that new parking lot on Shreveau's property would be done in a way that it would be convenient and easy and safe to come across. And it would be, my understanding is parks would make the decision whether they needed the parking right away, but they wouldn't just let everybody go there back and forth. If there was a major thing, then they would allow some people to go there.
Right, I'm just concerned that somebody with a key is just going to open the gate and let people go onto Stony Street through an intersection that's not safe.
That's right.
And I'd like there to be some form of.
Protocol.
A protocol that prevents that from happening, or invites it if we see that that road is.
Makes sense.
So if you look at the plan, right, at the end of the green, there is a proposed new gate that would go right there.
Right.
So would stop you from going down to Stony Street. So that was there, for that purpose.
No, I understand that. It's exactly my point, is who controls that? Somebody who has an uncle who they like is going to say, let's open the gate and let everybody go down that road? I don't want to encourage the possibility of a problem.
In this scenario, without improving the grade on the bottom, we would have the key to that. We would not be opening that gate up. The only in and out would be through the park.
Okay.
And how does the emergency access for emergency vehicles function, that we talked about last time? Just to remind everyone?
With the gate up?
No, just how are emergency vehicles accessing these two sites? Well, they could be either, well, let me go back, so as Brian mentioned, there's a gate here, that's electric. So that could easily be provided with a remote control for the fire department, sometimes they use the sirens, they double beep or something like that, opens the gate automatically. It's a relay that goes on the gate, and that's done all the time. How are they getting to that point? From where?
Is your question now, John, about the gates, or about just access in general?
Where is the access, how are they accessing in an emergency situation?
That's what I was asking.
You know, to get to the gate, you know, I understand the gates, knock boxes and all that stuff.
So you've been getting to the gate today?
How are they coming into the sites?
There are three ways to get to the site.
Right, you're coming through the park itself, you can come back up here.
One.
You're coming through the main driveway entrance.
Two.
And you can use this.
Exactly.
Okay, so if the main access is blocked, that's why we have emergency access. Where will they be coming through? Probably, first reaction would be coming up this driveway. And so they will have a key to the first gate, and some other way to get into the second gate? Whatever they need, yeah. Okay, so, that begs the question, in my view, as to why that road would not be improved for access by the emergency vehicles, if only the emergency vehicles. It's 20 percent greater, very close to the intersection. That's where my, that's where my point is coming from, as you guys probably understand.
We know that. And just, look, Jerry, you can comment on this, I think our response is, it's somewhat fortuitous, probably for the town and for my client, that the park ended up getting improved at about the same time that the school began to come online. So the good news for us is that we have emergency access over the town property. The better news for the town is that the town, which probably needs it as much if not more, has emergency access over our client's property, and now has the ability to adequately park for vehicles its own recreational park. So that's the part of this circular conversation that I don't understand why we keep having it. I fully appreciate John's comment about safety, and the good news is, we have emergency access, reciprocal emergency access.
I understand that, what, well, what's.
Do we need a third means of emergency access?
Look, you're asking us to make a decision on how you want to eliminate that other original planned road, am I right?
I don't know about, do we eliminate, or just not over-improve?
No, you're eliminating the original road.
The original driving force.
Oh, the original, I apologize, yes.
What brought you here originally is the desire to eliminate another part of the construction.
The originally designed access point, correct.
Then the question is, which of two options are you going to follow in order to get permission to eliminate that? Either you're saying, either we improve that driveway to good standards and not build the parking lot, or we leave the driveway as it is and build the parking lot.
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct.
So the choice for this board is, what direction do we want this project to go on, on those issues? And the question is, what the priorities are. I don't particularly think it's advantageous for the town to have another access that's circuitous, you know, that drives all around the school. It's an indirect way out, it's not, it's not something that we can depend upon necessarily. I think the access out over the driveway is the shortest distance out and into the town's property. It provides you guys that access that you need as well. Maybe the parking should be secondary at this point. The parking issue is something that might fill in later on, and I don't know. I'm just suggesting that to the board, and the consideration is, what is the board's priority, what do you think is more important, to try to accomplish here?
I have a question about that section of road that comes off of Stony Street, that would I.
The driveway?
Right. Is it, was it ever your intent, Phase Three, Phase Four, Phase whatever, to improve that roadbed, that road surface at all?
My answer is no. Correct? It was going to be eliminated with the construction of the first road.
Rob, the answer is no.
But now, now they don't want to do it.
Right. So the, like I said, the current approval has part of that roadway being eliminated. In fact, they took down a structure to accommodate the road that's on the books right now, which is the double road. So part of it was going to be removed.
Yes. We're happy to grant, my client is reminding me that, I think we stated publicly, we're happy to grant the town an easement to utilize that if the town decides that is a better way than, as you indicate, the circuitous route through the school.
But we have an easement now, don't we?
Over that strip of, you may, it's been so long.
That's how we used to get to the field up there on the top.
You meant easement to, from the parking lot itself?
Oh, I see.
Yes, I think there may be a construction and temporary access easement in order to really improve it.
I don't know, I have a thought. When the park was approved, how many years ago? It was approved with all the parking and everything they had. Now they get busy, and they put the burden on the surrounding property owner to get more parking. I just don't, I just.
Wasn't that originally, was that green lot in the?
No, no.
The parking lot was not original, though.
Okay.
The park, when they approved that, all the planning went by, everybody went, said this and that, and they approved all the parking there. All of a sudden, they find they need more parking, and what do they do, they put a burden on, right or wrong, I'm just feeling that, I don't think it's right that we should consider parking. They should do what they want, and if the town wants to build parking later, they'd do it.
And how do you feel about the access?
Well, the access road should go in.
Improve.
Improve.
Okay.
But they shouldn't have to dig, how many thousands of yards you were going to do?
The original driveway was 30 feet of cut and 20, you know, 40,000 yards of cut.
Couple hundred.
That was, that was 40,000, this one that he has redesigned as an alternative, I think what he said was 3,000. Three to five, something like that. Yeah, the cut, that cut was 30 feet, this cut at the deepest is about five.
I think we should go to 30, to five.
So in that case, you'd be talking about improving that strip of driveway? And you're amenable to that? And that would provide the town with emergency access to the park?
And then?
And emergency access for the school, to the school. Or secondary access.
Yeah, which is needed. You know, if you, just, if I might interject just quickly, you're adding, in either direction, you're adding at least a half a mile to the emergency response.
For the school?
For the school. If the school's main entrance is blocked, and this road we're speaking of now is not accessible, and they need to use the park as the emergency way in, that's an additional half mile. And they're coming from Mohegan, I think Mohegan Fire Company, or this is the district. If it's the other way, if they're coming around, for instance, if you, if you start at the throat of this road that we're speaking of, and you go north and go in the main entrance and all the way around, and try to get back to the park, that's an, that's a mile. That's a mile of driving, through a parking lot, by the way, the one that we just were speaking of.
You're talking about emergency vehicles.
Yes, so all of that, you know, makes, makes this short run much more attractive and reasonable.
It's a well's point, though. If they make that investment in improving it to whatever level, not the full standard or what have you, but it's accessible, then to put any kind of burden on them for parking would seem to be over the top. I mean, I think it's a nice gesture that they've offered to provide the land and other things as well, but it's like a double dip.
I understand that concept completely.
They're saving money, though. This is cheaper than the other one.
I, that's, well, if you're talking about the two roadways and forget about the parking lot, absolutely.
Okay. Let's, let's cover.
Thanks.
Jim, you're right. We don't need a sixth visit, let's see what we can do.
That's it, let's wrap it up, please.
So we'll issue a memo tomorrow about the parking lot construction, so that can get started.
That's great.
Are you in a position to make a decision on? No, 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 on the access.
Why can't we make a decision? I mean, it's not going to give us any more information that we already know.
Parks and Rec weigh in on this at all?
I mean, right now, is there expectation that they're getting parking?
Yeah. Well, I spoke to this superintendent, and, you know, they had discussions, and there was agreement, but the Parks superintendent, and I don't know that he's speaking for the commission, has said, you know, we have to obviously put safety over anything else, so, you know, they're prepared, or he's prepared, for whatever, whichever, however this flushes out. But if you want to speak to them directly, we can reach out to them to get something written from them. I think that's up to you.
And if the parking lot was built, who's funding that? Are you guys funding that, or are you expecting the town to fund that?
Under which, under which version, a written?
Yesterday's version.
Well, I guess, in what we're looking at there, that version, right?
This version, we would build it. In the new version, we would happily provide the land and an easement to them to use it and build it at their expense.
I think that's fair, that's fair.
We had a public hearing on this, didn't we, in May?
Yes, you did.
I don't know who spoke, but I'm just looking at the minutes of that, and I don't see it. I think we should make, why don't we propose a decision, get, see what Parks and Rec says, and.
So you want to draft resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
My sense would be that we're focused more on safety than we are on parking.
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable, given the scope of your operation, and is the primary consideration here, safety. And your point is well-taken, John, about the additional travel, which would otherwise be entailed, so that's good. Anything else?
No, I think this school is an asset to the community, well-known, gives us a good reputation. I think we should do all we can to help them along and minimize their cost. That's my thought. I mean, just because they are who they are, we shouldn't stick it to them. That's all I'm saying.
I never got that feeling.
No, I mean it, I mean, because they're a big organization, unreasonable, the parking lot should be the responsibility of the Parks Department.
They present?
And not the.
They did present it as an option, so we considered it, we're raising safety above that, which is what you're talking about, and I think we can go on.
Safety of the road, I think is primary.
Yeah, okay. And then that little connector road, the bottom green part there, that's going to connect to, is that already there?
Yeah. No, that's not there like that, it's a different connection now, they'd have to make additional changes to do that.
Okay.
The town would.
The town would, but it's not unreasonable, it's not.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Good?
Yes.
Okay.
Good five.
Five and we're done?
Yeah. That's right, David.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Good night. Okay. Last item, number 10 on the agenda, is a presentation on Adel Avenue Soul project. This is a site plan and special use permit application, and it is on Adel Avenue in the lower corner of town.
Indeed it is. While the rest of my team begins to set up, I will do some brief introduction here. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zaren and Steinmetz here this evening, pleased to be representing Seoul Systems. Seoul is the tenant of the property that you all may recall previously referred to as the Croton Overlook Site, presently owned by Matt Matthews. Joined this evening by Matt Matthews in the back, by Rennie Friedman and Eric Alves de Sa from Seoul. Rennie and Eric are trained technical consultants and professionals with Seoul, they're going to walk us through some of the discussion this evening about the. They're going to walk us through some of the discussion this evening about the proposed solar array. While they're setting up, I want to take one or two steps back. We spent a number of months, maybe actually more than a year, working with John and the then-town board and the planning board about eight, nine years ago, obtaining a rezoning of this sixty-five acre property to accommodate a proposed age-restricted multifamily residential townhouse project. The property was rezoned, the property went through a full-blown SECA analysis at that time, and though it didn't receive all of its final approvals, it had gotten through the major hurdles: rezoning, completion of SECA, and the identification of its impacts. You guys are ready to go? So I don't, okay. Our client, and we were, as I said, we were involved at that time. Our client never built the project, ultimately passed, and the property at that point ended up reverting to the mortgage holder, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Matthews and I came before the town, I guess, two years ago, maybe a year and a half, and were prepared to resurrect the potential residential project. And at the time, Seoul, among some other solar companies, was also looking at the property and interested in a ground-mounted Seoul Array. We came before your board and the town board and discussed, in an informal setting, what does the town prefer to see, what would the town like to see here? We were very well aware of some of the other solar applications that had been ongoing and being processed in the town. This is kind of a very unique location, given it's largely bucolic and very few neighbors in that immediate area. It's not particularly visible from Route 100 and it seemed to be a very good alternative for a ground-mounted solar array. While no one in the town absolutely and unequivocally voted, "You must pursue Mr. Matthews the solar application," he was encouraged to pursue this as a viable and suitable location for ground-mounted solar. What ensued from there was Rennie, Eric, and their team, working with TRC engineers, assembling the material, working to develop an application, and we're really excited to be here tonight to begin kicking off on this project. I should also mention that we have been actively engaged with one of our largest single-property neighbors for a period of time. That neighbor is represented this evening by counsel here tonight. We're hoping that as we go through this process and continue to share data, line of sight analysis, visual analysis, and the discussion of screening, we're confident that we will get to a point where we will have actual support from that neighbor. I'm not here to tell you tonight that we do, but I can tell you that we are really pleased that there has been a good cooperative and open dialogue and discussion, and we think it will lead to positive results. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Rennie to walk us through the site, the location of the solar array, the size of the solar array, and to explain the amount of this property that has the capability of remaining undisturbed in the event it is developed in this fashion.
Thanks, David. Members of the board, it is a pleasure to be here this evening. For the record, Rennie Friedman, I'm the director of project development for Seoul Systems. Other members of the team we have here tonight is David mentioned, my colleague Eric, David, our esteemed counsel, and other team members that we have, Matt Matthews, the property owner, he is here as well, and our civil and environmental engineers of record, TRC, Stephen Collin. They are not here this, this evening, but, you know, I'm sure you have seen their names on things, you've seen TRC's plans, but this is the project team that we have here. Again, very, very excited to be here tonight in front of you all, to present Seoul Systems to you, to present the project to you, why we think it's an excellent project, an excellent use of this land, and of course, answer any initial questions you may have, receive any initial feedback. We know this is not the first time we're going to be here, and we know we'll be dealing with many other members of the town, many other boards and things like that, but we are very excited to continue this project moving forward. So I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Seoul Systems, who we are as a company. One point with that, you'll see that the applicant is an LLC for the project company. That's very typical in a lot of development, in solar development. You will also see the name SCS, or Seoul Customer Solutions. Make no mistake, we are Seoul Systems. We are one company. We operate as one company. But I did want to explain just the structure of how that works, so there's no, you know, secrets, no surprises, anything like that. So Seoul Systems is a company, we were founded in 2008. We've deployed in various factions over a one gigawatt into solar projects through a number of different means, whether it's tax equity financing, development, asset management, O and M. We offer the full suite of services in-house. And in 2019, we formed a joint venture partner with a company then called Capital Dynamics, now rebranded to Arivon Energy, and we formed a joint venture partnership, SCS. So if you see the term SCS, it's a joint venture between Seoul Systems and Arivon Energy. What's nice about this is, Arivon, who is the majority owner of SCS, is the long-term owner, project financier of the project, but they are part of our company and we do the asset management for them. So this is a long-term partnership between Seoul Systems, between the property owner, and of course, between the town as well. You know, once, if there's issues with the, with the project, if there's questions, the person that gets those phone calls sits fifty feet away from me, once the system is operational. So we do finance the project, but it's financed through the company that owns us. That's a very important factor, because again, it is a long-term partnership. This is a twenty-five-year-plus operational term of the project, so we are not here just to get the approval and then you're never going to see us again. We are here for the entire life of the project. So just to help orient everyone a little bit to where the project is, over on the right side of the screen, you'll see a very zoomed-out map of the town. You'll see where in the bottom-right corner. The majority of the screen is a little bit closer up. You can see where Sawmill River Road is, that runs north-south. Again, you can see where the, where the project location is via the, via the red star on the map. And then if you go to the next one, you can see zoomed in, here's where the project location is. Again, Sawmill River Road is on the left side of the screen, running basically north-south. Thanks, Eric. And then basically where it kind of spurs off and Dell Avenue travels a little bit northeast, that is where the project is. So I'll just kind of take a second there to allow everyone to orient themselves. Again, what you're seeing on the screen, it is facing plan view north, so what we're looking at is, is facing north here. One of the things that you'll see throughout the various visuals we have in the presentation on, on the boards here is that it is very, it's a very well-screened area from a natural standpoint. You'll see that there's a lot of existing trees, existing natural vegetation between ourselves and heavily-traveled public roadways, between ourselves and neighbors, between ourselves and other communities that are a little bit further away from the, from the project.
Rennie, just to correct you from all, that, we're also seeing 134 where it comes and intersects 100 right there.
Correct, correct.
Just to orient everybody.
Thanks, David. Yep. Good next slide. So this will not be the last site plan that, that you'll see in the presentation, but just, just wanted to hit on some general kind of project facts first, and then we'll get into some of the more details of the site layout and things of that nature. So again, we're calling it the Dell Avenue Solar Farm Project. It is per definition a large-scale solar energy generation system. It is what we consider a DG, or a distributed generation solar project, meaning it's not a utility-scale project. Those are the much, much larger projects that you see in other parts of the country. But this project, it's roughly a 4.3 megawatt, 4,300 kilowatt DC. That's the size of the system that's built. Just for comparison, you know, we're 4.3 megawatts DC. The utility-scale projects are 100 megawatts plus, so it gives you some, some size there. It's a 3.6 megawatt, 3,600 kilowatt AC. That's the amount of power that it can produce when it's operating at maximum efficiency. The total property area that the project is being sited on is about 62 acres. However, we're only developing 14 acres of it. That is less than 25 percent. We have carefully sited and chosen our developable area to avoid impacts to wetlands and the 100-foot buffer associated with those wetlands. We try to preserve, again, other natural environmental features on the site, making sure to be respectful of our adjacent property owners and other view corridors and things like that. So over 75 percent of the property is going to remain undisturbed. We're not going to touch it as part of this project. And again, you'll, I'll get into a little more details about where exactly that falls, but again, a 62-acre total site, we're developing approximately 14 acres of it. As far as the, the height of the panels, generally panels are eight feet, eight and a half feet tall. They will not exceed 10 feet in any way, shape, or form. I say it varies because how you build it and how you align it, the rows need to be straight. They don't need to be flat, but they need to be straight. So one panel at its point might be exactly eight feet off the ground, maybe the next one's 8.1 feet off the ground. So it does vary a little bit, but again, the height will not exceed 10 feet. Once construction starts, we expect it to take approximately nine months, give or take. That is from start to finish. Most of the work that you would typically think of in a construction project will happen in the first four to five months, and then there's a lot of electrical work and testing and commissioning that happens after. So it'll look like a normal construction site, quote-unquote, lots of people for about four to five months, and then there's a good period of testing and commissioning to make sure the system is functioning properly and safely before it actually gets brought online. The initial operating term we have, per our lease, is a 25-year operating term. So again, it is a long-term partnership. When it comes time, if and when, we choose to decommission the project. That's roughly a six-month process. Again, that's a minimum of 25 years out, potentially longer than that. The production, over 5 million kilowatt-hours annually of solar electricity will be generated by this project. That's a big number. What does that number mean? It's enough to power about 450 homes. So again, it's not a utility-scale project, but it is a very sizable project. The off-take program here, it is a community solar project, so we know that the town is one of the top participants in the county's community solar program. This project will allow residents and businesses in the town to participate in that community solar program also. One thing I wanted to make sure to point out, and I know this is something that has changed a little bit since we were last here, we are no longer directly pursuing a battery as part of this project. Older versions of the plans had a battery called out. We are no longer directly pursuing it. We are not here as part of this application to get approval for a battery. What we have done is designed it and taken the necessary precautions to make it battery-ready. What I mean by that is, we have space that we're not developing on right now. If there is such time as a battery makes financial sense for the project, we will have another application, we will come back and front. But we are preserving space. We are designing our stormwater management facilities such that they are sized to handle the additional impervious area that a battery concrete pad would have. If the battery never gets built and the stormwater management facilities are just a little bit larger than they need to be for this exact project. So certainly not a bad thing there. But I wanted to make sure to point that out. We're not here to get approval for a battery as part of this application, but it is battery-ready with space and stormwater management considerations and access considerations. If in the event we do come back, five years, something like that, the incentives change, the financial structure change, and it might make sense to add a battery to this project. Just to be honest, at this point in time, with the incentives, the battery does not pencil for this project. So here is a little more zoomed-up detailed version of the site plan. It's a different orientation. You'll see that north is kind of going to the, the right a little bit. But just wanted to point out a couple of features here that you can see. So the first bullet, you know, what is it going to look like in and around the solar panels once it's done? We're doing a metal-like environment. We want to do a pollinator-friendly type habitat. Part of that is, we're going to do, we have to do per electric code, a seven-foot-tall chain-link fence. We're going to leave a six-inch clearance at the bottom, so the local wildlife can go into the site. It's not, it's not harmful to them. It's very, very common. And again, it's a pollinator-friendly mix, so we can't go so far to call it pollinator habitat. The site isn't quite conducive to that. There's a state scorecard, we would not qualify, but we are going to do a pollinator-friendly mix. So grasses that are native to the area that require less mowing, there will still be mowing, but there will be less mowing than a typical turf grass and things of that nature. One of the other things we've tried to do with this plan is minimize the access roads as much as possible. We are using pervious gravel access road, so it's not a paved access road, it's pervious. But again, we know that even gravel has an environmental consideration. So what you'll see there in kind of dark purple is where the gravel access roads are. We're proposing two access points, both onto Dell Avenue, one over there to the west a little bit, and then one a little bit further east along Dell Avenue. What's nice about that is it provides a very nice means of ingress and egress into and out of the site, both for normal site operations, maintenance, repairs, things like that. Also, in the event that there is an emergency and emergency vehicles do need to go there, again, it provides them a much easier means of ingress and egress to and from the site. We'll of course do a knockbox or a lockbox at both gates, so the fire department will have access. Couple other features you can see here on the blown-up site plan, blue are the stormwater management facilities. The site's not really conducive to infiltration, but we are proposing a series of swales and bio-retention facilities and other features like that for a stormwater management standpoint. Very, very small amount of impervious area, roughly 2,600 square feet, that's it. Very, very, very small amount of impervious area, but there are still stormwater management considerations, so we do have stormwater management facilities shown to capture and treat the necessary runoff. You'll see the pink at the bottom, that's the 100-foot offset from the wetlands, the 100-foot buffer from the wetlands. So we're staying completely out of those areas. We are not impacting, again, not only the wetlands, but the 100-foot buffer of the wetlands, we're staying out of that as well. We have proposed initially some key landscaping points. One of the things we really like about this site is that it's not very visible. I said not very visible. I'm not going to tell you that if we were to build it and not do any of this, you would never see it. So we've driven the site, we've done some site analysis, we've walked all up and down Dell Avenue, didn't see a car driving up and down Dell Avenue while we were there, but we did notice that there are a couple of points where some enhanced landscaping of visual screen would definitely be, would definitely help, would be the appropriate thing to do, would be per code. So we do have a couple of key points there where we're proposing landscaping. And then the last feature, there's a couple of orange boxes where our main electrical equipment for the project will, will be. Solar is very, very quiet. It's a great neighbor. You will not be able to hear anything from the roads, from off the property, basically only if you were right next to that gear when the sun was shining bright and it was producing power. It's the only time you would even hear anything. So again, it's a very, solar makes a great neighbor, very quiet, and especially at night. So as I've mentioned, you know, we know that there are environmental features on site. We know there's trees on site. We wanted to be cognizant of that when we cited the project, when we laid it out, so we kind of had these four guiding principles that we went with. First and foremost, no impacts to the wetlands. That was a non-starter out of the gate. Staying out of the wetlands, staying out of the 100-foot buffer of the wetlands, no impacts there. Minimal visual impact. Again, I can't say no visual impact and we're, and we're proposing mitigation for that. One of the reasons we chose this site, it's very well-naturally screened. A lot of the site is on Dell Avenue, which has minimal, minimal traffic. There is one cell tower and one residence on Dell Avenue. Those are the only uses on Dell Avenue, and Sawmill River Road goes right back around, so no one would really have a reason to cut through Dell Avenue. So we were out there the other day, probably for about three hours, I don't think we saw a single car on Dell Avenue. So very nice there. We try to get the tree impact as minimal as possible. I know that might sound counterintuitive. I'm telling you, we're here, we're going to clear 14 acres of trees. I'm not trying to hide that fact. What I mean by that is, we're not clearing anything that we don't need to. A lot of solar projects, you clear, you have to clear beyond your fence line because it's going to shade the project. You can build the project, if you have a tree next to it, it's going to shade it. We're not doing that here. We're not clearing any additional trees needed for shading. As such, this project, the shading impacts here, we've run the analysis, it's about three to four times worse than our typical project, but that's on us. We've incorporated that into our models, into our accounting, into everything else. We've tried to minimize the tree clearing. We're not clearing any additional trees needed for shading. And what does clearing 14 acres of trees mean from a renewable energy production standpoint? Per the EPA calculator, this project is going to offset the greenhouse gases, the carbon that would be typically sequestered by 2,000 acres of trees. That number is not a misprint. 2,000 acres of trees. number is not a misprint, 2,000 acres of trees. So the 5 million megawatt, 5 million kilowatt-hours a year that this project is outputting, that clean energy, is equal to the carbon sequestration, the offsets by not using fossil fuels to create that power, 2,000 acres of trees. And again, we know that we are clearing trees, and the York Town Tree Bank Fund will be compensated for that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
Why would you not consider clearing additional trees to improve the performance? You said there's a shading, an impact of the shading. Is it because of the location of the particular trees or just the quantity of trees?
I'd say it's both. Some of the trees help preserve the visual buffer from roads and neighboring properties. Some of it is, we are very cognizant of the trees that we're clearing. And if we can make the project work and only clear 14 acres, only clear what we absolutely need to, then that's what we're going to do. We could clear 20 acres and have a much, the financial impacts of six additional acres of clearing and fees and everything would be far outweighed by the additional gains, but we don't want to do that. We are trying to do the best we can here, and the project works with just clearing the 14 acres of trees.
Thank you.
And again, the last principle, as I noted, really trying to minimize impervious surfaces. We're only, we're using pervious gravel access roads. We're only using pervious concrete pads where we absolutely need them. We have stormwater management facilities to treat that limited impervious area, but we're really minimizing that. Again, I think we have about 2,600 square feet of impervious area. I think the previous application that David mentioned to you had about 100 times that. So quite literally, on an impervious area calculation, it's 1 percent of what the previous application was. Just, I'll kind of go through this slide pretty quick. But again, the benefits of this project, the purposes of this project, it helps York Town's commitment to green practices. It helps the New York State goals. New York State has very aggressive climate leadership goals, very aggressive renewable energy targets. The state wants to be 100 percent carbon-free grid by 2040 and have 70 percent renewable energy generation by 2030. 2030 is not that far away. Even less far away is 2025. The state wants to deploy 6,000 megawatts of solar by 2025. At the end of last year, they were about 3,400 megawatts, so a little over halfway there. So over the next three years, they want to bring online another 2,600. Again, this is a small piece of that puzzle, but it's a very important piece as well. A couple of other benefits to the project, we've touched on these, I've touched on these, but less reliance on fossil fuels, reduced carbon footprint. Another nice thing about solar, it makes a great neighbor. There's no impact to, really, very, very minimal impact to public services. So there's really no increased traffic after the project is built. There's your typical maintenance visits, but very, very, very minimal traffic increase, negligible, effectively no pollution from the site. There's no effluence. There's no sewer. There's really no public water usage. There would be no public water hookup. We don't intend to wash the panels. The rain does that for us. There's no impact on the schools, of course. There's no, no one's going to live here that will go to school. So very, very low impact on a lot of public community services. Positive impact on the schools. Thank you, David. Again, it is a community solar program, so we'll allow local residents and businesses to take advantage of that, to unlock reduced energy costs through the community solar program. And there will be increased tax revenue to the town as well. One of the things we will, would like to discuss with you at some point is entering into a pilot agreement, payment in lieu of taxes. But that will increase the annual property tax paid to the town over what is currently paid. So there will be increased tax revenue to the town as well. And again, you'll see in the bottom that nice figure, I can't highlight this enough, 2,000 acres of trees. We're clearing 14 to produce renewable energy, that 2,000 acres of trees. So we just have a couple of renderings. Again, I want to stress, these are renderings. These are graphic representations. These do not have every single tree measured to their exact caliber and height, but if you go to Google and you can actually see, this photo here is a Google image. It is, it's a very heavily wooded area surrounding it, very, very natural screening. So here's one, kind of a bird's-eye view, looking at it. From the south, looking north, you can see we do have the two subarrays, again, just based on existing site features and topo. You can see the internal access roads and our two access points onto Dell Avenue. Here is one looking at the site from the west, looking east across Sawmill River Road. That's what you see there. You can see the existing cell tower site, kind of located to the left of the array. You can see the existing high-tension power lines that are there. So again, this area is not totally devoid of uses like this. This is the larger of the two subarrays. Again, this is from the west, looking east. And then the next one is the smaller of the two subarrays. This is from the south, looking north. You can see the access road there. You can also see the existing cell tower on the left side of the screen. At the very north, the very top of this page, is our second access point onto Dell Avenue. So that concludes my presentation. Again, happy to answer any and all questions that anyone might have. Really excited to be here and appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
I got a question.
Please.
How much of this project is financed with taxpayer money?
With taxpayer money?
Yeah.
So there's no direct taxpayer financing here. It does-
You must be working with grants and from Connaissance or from the state?
There is the state incentive program, correct. There's also the federal investment tax credit.
So what percentage of your project financing is done by taxpayer?
I'm not honestly quite sure how to answer that. I'm not trying to skirt the question-
No, I know.
-at all. But I mean, I can get into some of the numbers. So the federal investment tax credit, for example, up to 35 percent of the project can be funded with that. I think right now we're at a, well, it's going to sunset in 22 percent. We've saved Harvard. I believe it's a 26 percent federal tax credit. So that's one part of it, the federal tax credit. The state incentives are a big portion of what drives the financial viability of the project. I honestly don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head. People much smarter than me in our company run that, but-
Bill, we're happy to come back and answer that.
No, I'm just being sarcastic because whatever savings the public has is circumvented by the taxpayer money that eliminates that. I know you don't follow me. I'm not being-
No, no, I do.
I mean, you give me 20 cents on my electric bill, but you give me a dollar, I have to pay a dollar on taxpayer money to support the 20 cents. Sorry.
No, you don't have to apologize.
Not that I'm not saying I'm against the project. No, never.
Oh, sure.
I'm just-
Just ask him a question.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I want to put everything in perspective in my head-
Sure.
-and how this project is going to move forward.
Understood.
Do you want to calculate how much grading you're going to have to do for this?
It's pretty minimal. There is some. I don't have the exact earthwork numbers. We can definitely get those for you. I will say our plans are not at a 90 percent stage yet, so the final grading hasn't been done.
Jump in for a second on that.
Oh, sure.
So Jim, one of the things-
Relatively flat.
The area that, the area of the solar arrays, for those of you that are familiar with the site and might have been involved in our application eight years ago, is almost in the identical area where the spine road was for the 68 previously approved townhouses. So the disturbance is in the same area, and what we can do when we come back is give you a comparative analysis. I believe we had determined that there's less disturbance with this than, again, full SEGRA finding statement adopted by the lead agency planning board concluding that there was no significant adverse environmental impact of a greater removal of trees and land disturbance. So-
Do you know how you want to proceed as far as SEGRA is concerned? Do you want to do this as a supplement to the EIS that was done here? Is it go, or do you want to start from scratch?
So we're happy to have a conversation with you and John and with the board. My initial answer to that is, this is an entirely new application. However, much of the data that the planning board relied on as lead agency remains valid data. So what we would like to do, working with TRC and your professional staff, is provide you with the additional information that relates to the solar array and proceed with, I think we've already submitted a long environmental assessment-
We have.
A long EAF, supplemental studies, and I will tell you, I'm happy to say on day one, I believe we can work cooperatively with you towards a NAGDAC.
It might just be faster to do it as findings off the old.
Happy to have a conversation with you. We're obviously looking to do this in the most efficient way possible.
Well, I just want to kind of pick up on that because we've done a number of applications and projects like this already, and this material that you have submitted so far is, I think, is excellent. It's comprehensive. It covers many things and anticipates all of the issues that we've been going through. So I thank you for that.
Aaron, one of the things we tried to do, John knows we've been on the sidelines for a while getting ready. We were very well aware of what you all went through on other applications, and Rennie and Eric spent a great deal of time trying to figure out how to present this in a thorough way. So we appreciate you acknowledging that.
Just getting back to something relating to the battery storage component of this, which is not in the application at this point, yet you say you want to kind of preserve the right to do that in the future. I see nothing in the plans which say how much additional land would be needed for that phase of, you know, part of the project. Do you have any idea what that might be?
Yeah, I think it's actually, shh, go ahead.
Or did you say it and I missed it?
Can you go back to that slide?
Yeah, probably the, yeah, that one's probably the best slide. So if you see where Eric's pointing, that smaller triangular area, that's it. In the grand scheme of a solar project, the battery footprint is much, 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 much smaller. And again, just to clarify, we're not, this application, we're not trying to get approval to do a battery.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to know if you were to do it, where did you reserve or-
That's where we go, and it's, again, it's a very small footprint.
And just for the benefit of the record, we spent a fair amount of time talking about exactly how we wanted to make sure this was clear. If, in fact, they make a decision and five years from now, I come back and I'm standing next to Rennie, I wanted to make sure that no one in this room could say, "You guys never told us that was a possibility." So in fact, an earlier iteration, it was not just a possibility, it was a probability that was going to be part of the application. They decided, and just want to make sure the record's clear, because of economic incentives, it just doesn't make sense. Rennie said quickly, "It doesn't pencil out." If you go back, that's what he said very quickly. So we wanted to make sure you see it could go here, where it could go here, and to their credit, what they're trying to do is bake into the stormwater the impermeable surface area that would beneath, would be beneath that battery storage should they ever come back, subject themselves to an amended site plan, a new SEGRA application. It's all for the future, if it happens.
Are you saying that economics is going to provoke that possible need?
It could be possible. No, it would be the economics, again, per the state incentive programs, there are separate incentives specific to battery storage. As of right now, those incentives would not allow the battery to be economically viable, but the state is constantly reviewing their program, updating the financial numbers, things like that. So if there is a time in the future that they change the program or the prices of, you know, consumer electricity rates go up, then it might make sense at that point in time.
What else can we answer?
Questions, thoughts from the board?
Can you tell us about Dell Avenue a little bit? I haven't been on Dell Avenue, so-
So it's a pretty, you know, I think you said it a few different times. It's a pretty sleepy road that has access to two houses?
I think it's one.
One house and a cell tower next door to us. I believe the one house on Dell, we're hoping, did we get a letter of support or?
I don't, we've reached out. I don't think we've actually made contact yet with that property, or we have tried to contact them. But Eric, if you go back to the one, probably the one that's got the solar panels in blue, I think that probably shows it the best.
That one?
Yeah. So Dell Avenue, it spurs off of Sawmill River Road, right there at the southwest corner of the project, and you can't see it, but just to the north, not just to the north, probably, I don't know, 1,500 feet to the north of where our project ends, it connects back to Sawmill River Road.
It's like a little loop-out.
It's probably three-quarters of a mile long.
It's the old Route 100.
Probably what it, exactly what it is.
Is that right? I think so.
It was, it was the access point to the residential project from eight years ago off of Dell. There's no, I don't believe there's any yellow striping on it. It's a little teeny side street.
Perhaps the worst paved road in town.
First-
Perhaps the worst paved road in town.
Worst paved road. There you go. Okay. Procedurally, what we were hoping tonight was to obviously present the application, give you the initial introduction. We'd love to get a public information meeting on, for a future agenda. Seoul is ready to advance this expeditiously and thoroughly. I know Matt Matthews wants to make sure that this thing proceeds. So whatever we can do, Mr. Chairman, to keep this moving, we are prepared to do so.
Is there any timeline or pressure relative to the grants?
Good question.
There is. Again, apologies. I don't know the exact dates off the top of my head. We don't foresee any issues with that in terms of, it's not like if we don't start construction in three months or some unattainable number. It's several years out, but there are timelines for that, yes.
And Rob, if you're willing to give a building permit tomorrow, we're happy to take it.
Sure.
One of the things we're always concerned about is screening and visibility of these projects, okay? You picked a couple of sites, and you ran great sightlines and the topography with it. I think that needs to be expanded. There are some significant town natural resources in the area that might or might not be impacted by this. Turkey Mountain Park, Kichwan Preserve, things of that sort. If it's, you know, just not going to happen because the topography blocks it, you know, we should at least know that in a sentence or two. Turkey Mountain being up pretty high might see this project. I don't know.
So we're happy to, if there are specific things that the planning board and staff want us to look at, let us know. In fairness, the only thing I'm going to say, and it'll be my client's decision whether they push back or say, "We'll study everything you want," nothing we are proposing is taller or more visible than the 68 townhouses that already went through the SEGRA process and were found, I'm going to say for the second or third time, to create no significant adverse environmental impact. So again, these guys are here, and they're telling me, "Be cooperative and let's make this happen." But I just want to, I can't let you forget that you all studied this under a full-blown SEGRA analysis.
You'll probably have to say that many more times.
All right. So I'm going to have to say, with John, it's going to be at least five. You know that.
Historically, the board may have done that, but not necessarily.
Hey, if, Aaron, if I have to go walk Turkey Mountain with these guys and take some photographs, that'll be a great day. So I can't wait.
We'll pull out, pull out the EIS because there are visual sightlines from other places in town, possibly Turkey Mountain. I know we talked about Hilltop Hanover Farm, so there's stuff in there.
We definitely did both.
That's a good starting point.
Yes. So-
I think it was a room test, though.
That could have been. Yeah, I think you might be right.
We're happy to take a look at all that. Again, they want, they want, they want the community to be as excited about this site as they are.
So we could set up an informational meeting then?
Please, that would be great.
Would we do that?
Why not?
Can we do it in?
If they're ready, why don't we go? What do we have?
What's our schedule?
July 25th.
That's early.
Yeah.
July 25th?
PIH.
And Jim's right. I omitted one sentence, and that is, we would expect you to designate your, actually, you already designated your intent to be lead agency. You did that a year ago.
On this application?
Yes.
We'll check that.
Yes.
If not, we will circulate for lead agency.
Got it. Robin, you know, you and Jody dealt with that, right? Am I correct?
Because whether we're lead agency or not, I think we have to do the PIH anyway.
That's totally fine. But my recollection, Jim, is that they designated their intent. I don't think we ever came back for you to formally declare yourselves lead agency. I think you did the designation.
The declaration usually comes the night of the approval.
Fair enough. So in any event, public information, you said July?
25th.
25th.
And you've been before conservation, I think, or you're going?
We went, we went there a year ago or something to that effect.
No, on this-
They were on the calendar with the next one.
It's the same, this is, this is the same application. We had filed prelim, just so that everybody's clear, that there's no confusion. We had filed very rapidly and preliminarily about a year ago, and we called the town and we appeared because we needed to get materials submitted to the state to try to get into that tranche of benefits and approvals that Bill doesn't like at that time. We did that, and so we started the process, and you sent us to the Conservation Board at that time.
Okay. Good. Anything else?
If I could jump in real quick and just touch on a couple of the comments. My name is Eric Alves Desa. I'm Project Development Manager at Seoul Systems. To your question about the Conservation Board, we're on their agenda for this coming Wednesday to review this particular site plan application. We're also looking to get on the calendar with the fire inspector and the engineering department in due time, in addition to the public information hearing. Mr. Garrigan, to your question about, are we on any timeline? I'm not sure if David mentioned it at the start while I was setting up the boards, but we do have our-